Good evening and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board. Today is Monday, September the 14th, 2020. The meeting is now open. Before we begin our meeting, there will be separate periods of public comment tonight, one for each public hearing and one general comment period towards the end of the meeting. Persons speaking during the public hearings may only address the planning board regarding that public hearing. Persons speaking during the general public comment period may provide planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment periods, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open for each period of public comment. Tonight, I will do the invocation and the flag salute will be done by Vice Chair Rizzotti. Please stand up. Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city. And please help us to accomplish our goals. In your name I pray, amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Yes. Planning Board Member Hadian? Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Here.
Planning Board Member Lou?
Present.
Vice Chair Rizzotti?
I am here.
And Chair Adhukanian?
Present. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meeting in lieu of in-person attendance. Members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Any announcements from city staff?
No new announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. There are three public hearings on tonight's agenda. Item number one, now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 20-0004667 concerning an appeal of the Community Development Director's approval of a single-family special development permit for a 1,682 square foot two-story addition and remodel of an existing 1,002 square foot single-family residence. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
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 No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
All of the ones that we received have been provided prior to the meeting.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Adhukanian and members of the Planning Board. Shipra Rajesh, Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight, you are being asked to consider a request for an appeal of the Community Development Director's approval of a single-family special development permit located at 725 North Catalina Street. A picture of the front facade of the existing house is shown on the slide. The project consists of remodeling of existing 1,002 square feet single-family dwelling and a 1,682 square feet two-story addition to the rear of existing house. On the first story, the project proposes addition of 868 square feet inclusive of a 131 square feet ground floor patio cover. On the second story, the project proposes addition of 814 square feet on top of the rare first story addition. The area of the lot is 6,750 square feet. The picture on the slide provides an aerial view of the project site. The area of addition is indicated in red. New 514 square feet garage, which was processed under a separate permit, is shown in yellow. The old garage was proposed to get demolished under a separate permit as well. This slide shows the project location. The project site is located at 725 North Catalina Street in the R1 Single Family Residential Zone. The property fronts North Catalina Street and is bound on either side by West Magnolia Boulevard and West Clark Avenue. The property is not located in the designated hillside area or any other zoning overlay districts. The map towards the left depicts the zoning of the lot and an aerial view of the project site is shown in the picture towards the right. This slide shows the site plan of the lot. The footprint of the first story addition is shown in red. The second story addition is depicted in yellow and the blue area indicates the location of first story patio cover. The front yard setback of the existing house is at 32 feet 2 inches. The proposed second story addition has a setback of 34 feet 9 and 1/2 inches as measured from the front facade of the existing house. The side yard setback of the proposed addition complies with the minimum required 10% lot width criteria, which is 5 feet in this case, with 5 feet 10 inches side setback proposed on the south of the building and 10 feet setback on the north side of the building. The second story also complies with the upper story side yard building modulation requirement per section 10-1-603 of the code. The rear yard setback for the proposed addition exceeds 40 feet, complying with the minimum required 15 feet setback requirement. Exhibit C of the staff report includes dimensioned site plan of the project. This slide shows the first and second story floor plans of the proposed house. The second story floor plan is shown on the left and the first story floor plan on the right. The dotted red line on the first story floor plan represents the footprint of the proposed second story. As noted in the staff report and approval letter contained in exhibit F of the staff report, the approved square footage of the first story addition is 868 square feet and second story addition is 814 square feet with a total of 1,682 square feet two-story addition. This slide shows the front and the north elevation of the proposed house. The front elevation shows a delineated first and second story, hip roof forms with multiple intersecting bridge lines, front porch entry area, and bay windows. The top of the roof height of the proposed house is 25 feet 6 inches, which is within the maximum permitted height of 30 feet as measured from the natural grade. And the top of the plate height is 20 feet, which also complies with the maximum allowed top of the plate height of 20 feet as measured from the adjacent natural grade. Dimensioned elevations are provided in exhibit C of the staff report. This slide shows the south and the west elevation of the proposed house. The south elevation is located directly adjacent to the appellant's property and as it can be seen from the rendering, there are no windows proposed along the second story facade of the south elevation. The first story patio cover can be seen on the rear elevation, which is towards the right of your slide. During the public noticing period, staff received input from the neighbors regarding the project. This slide gives an overview of the concerns expressed by the neighbors, including the appellant. Concerns were expressed about the two-story addition being incompatible with the existing character of the neighborhood. More specifically, the appellant expressed concern regarding placement of the windows along the front facade of the proposed second story impacting her privacy. The front windows were identified as a concern due to the second story setback and its placement relative to the appellant's side windows. As previously specified, no windows are proposed for the south side facade directly adjacent to the appellant's property and therefore this facade was not indicated as a concern. Exhibit G of the staff report contains the appeal documents. On the slide, the rendering towards the left represents the front elevation. The windows along the second story front facade are labeled. Window labeled A is the bathroom window. B is the closet window. Windows labeled C are the bedroom windows and D is the staircase window. The window labeled E, highlighted in blue, represents appellant's window. The site plan towards the right provides a bird's eye view of the window placement along the front facade of the second story with respect to the neighbor's windows, which is indicated in blue. The green area indicates landscape screening, which has been provided in the form of hedges and which will eventually grow out to be up to 10 to 12 feet tall. This slide provides details regarding the changes that have been incorporated during the review process to address the concerns of the neighbors. The rendering on the left shows the front elevation that was originally submitted. Over the course of review, the size of non-bedroom windows labeled A, B, and D was reduced. All the non-bedroom windows were placed at minimum 6 feet height from the second story floor. The bedroom windows labeled C are placed 44 inches from the floor to meet the emergency egress requirement of California Building Code. As previously mentioned, landscape screening has been provided along the side property line, which would grow up to a height of 10 to 12 feet. Additionally, design-related changes such as addition of shutters, grids, and window boxes, and exposed rafter tails were incorporated to make the proposed two-story addition consistent with the design of existing house. It should be noted that the front two bedroom windows add to the architectural compatibility of the proposed addition and is required to allow sufficient light and air into the bedroom. This slide shows the changes that were made to the north-facing facade of the house. The left rendering shows the north elevation that was submitted as a part of original summital and the rendering on the right indicates all the changes made to the facade to address concerns of the neighbors. The changes include reduction in the size of the window and increase in the height of the window from 4 feet 3 and 1/2 inches to 6 feet. Additionally, grids were added to the window, exposed rafter tails were provided, and design-related details were added to the rear porch. Along the rear facade of the house, changes were made to the size, height, and design of the windows as shown in the rendering towards the right. The rendering on the left represents elevation that was originally submitted. It should be noted that windows were not proposed along the second story of south elevation, which is adjacent to the appellant's house. Moving on to the review process, the project triggers a single-family special development permit due to the proposed two-story addition that exceeds 500 square feet in size and will be visible from North Catalina Street. The findings for approval of single-family special development permit are in three parts. The first part pertains to compliance of the project with required R1 development standards, including FAR, lot coverage, height of the building, compliance with the first and second story setbacks, landscaping, and parking. The second part pertains to findings regarding the project's compliance with Neighborhood Compatibility Checklist, which addresses other aspects of project design such as 360-degree architectural compatibility, massing and modulation of the building, roof style, upper story placement, and landscaping. The third finding pertains to the conditions imposed on the project by different city departments. Conditions have been placed to ensure maintenance of privacy between neighboring properties. These include a minimum 6 feet height requirement for all the non-bedroom windows located along the front elevation of the second story and requirement of landscape screening in the form of hedges along the side property line. Exhibit F of the staff report contains the project approval letter and findings of single-family special development permit as well as the departmental conditions of approval. Based on the staff's ability to make all the findings for the project, staff recommends that the planning board approve a resolution denying an appeal of the Community Development Director's decision approving project number 18-0005463 for a single-family special development permit, therefore approving the project. This concludes my presentation. Staff will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. I will now invite the appellant or their representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Erin Hawkins. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about this tonight. If I may, I am not a public speaker. I have written a small outline of what I'd like to say and it'll probably only be about four minutes. I am the owner-occupant at my residence 721 North Catalina Street for the past 35 years, directly south of 725. I have been involved with this permit process since I first received the public notice in the mail in December 2019, asking me to participate with my input regarding the project. I share this information with you as I feel it is important as to why I have filed an appeal. It is not my intention to stifle progress for property improvements. In fact, I applaud it. I am asking that my property rights be respected also. Our homes are our sanctuaries. My home is the largest and most important purchase I have and will ever make in my lifetime, is an investment in my life and my well-being. I think that it is important that I voice my concerns. The reason that I did choose to participate was because I was already concerned about the building being constructed at the rear of the existing house at 725. This construction, we were not publicly notified of. We were surprised one day walking outside into our backyard and seeing framework erected next to our shared wall. Sometime later, as the construction continued, we noticed window spacing into our backyard. We estimated probably 3 feet from the property line. A search at the Burbank website showed a permit for a garage. We do not believe that this project is or ever intended to be a garage, but instead a rental unit. This particular project has been under construction for years. I'd like to circle back to comment more about this project and the effect I feel that it has in relation to the current project. Our homes are located in our one single-family residential zone. We unfortunately feel that the owner at 725 would like to see his property turned into an apartment complex. Already, all greenscape has been removed from the rear of 725 and concrete has replaced the entire yard, creating a parking lot look. While we understand that Burbank is now allowing for more ADUs, or otherwise known as granny flats, we feel that the spirit of this idea will be used instead as a vacation and short-term rental. Fast forward and now we are being asked to approve a permit for more construction with an extension to the existing house structure and a second story above the extension and lots of windows, windows with sightlines that look directly into my home. After my initial email to the project planner, I was put in touch with Lisa Frank at the planning division. Upon my first visit to her office, she explained and showed me the proposed plans for 725. She also explained that the Community Development Department played a big role in the permit process as the city was very concerned about the aesthetics of the neighborhood, even down to how the style of the construction would adhere to property's neighborhood standards. I felt hopeful that the city would want to protect my concerns also. After reviewing the plans, we discussed my thoughts. I was immediately let down by the number of windows on the proposed second story that were looking down into my bathroom and into my bedroom windows. After expressing my worries with Lisa, we talked about some remedies. As you can see on the proposed plans, the first and second, the first window on the second story closest to my property line is the bathroom window. The second window, the closet, the third and fourth, the bedroom, and the fifth is stairwell, all facing east. These windows do not face directly onto the street as the extension of the second story is added to the rear of the house. The new proposed windows face onto the existing roof with direct sightlines into my bathroom and bedroom. Here lies the problem. Effectively, these windows give a balcony or bird's eye view directly into my home. The first remedy discussed was asking that all of these windows facing east be moved up 6 feet from the finished floor. So while the request for three of the windows being raised to 6 feet, the bathroom, closet, and stairwell were accommodated, the bedroom windows were not. Fire code was the reason given. I understand the fire code and it should have been mentioned from the very beginning when the initial concerns were made, but it was not mentioned until we were at the end of the planning process and the permit went for approval. I am wondering why. I asked that maybe the floor plan be adjusted so the windows facing east could all be 6 feet high. Example, maybe move the location of the actual bedroom. I was told that was out of the question. I started to feel like that maybe the only concern was how the finished project was going to look rather than the impact it was having on neighboring properties. I was wondering exactly how many windows in a bedroom are required to be exitable? I have been told only one. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Each time I came back to the city to discuss this permit, I felt less hopeful. I asked to see drawn sightlines on the blueprints. First, I was told the request was made, then later I was told the planner was having trouble getting them. Finally, once I did see them, I was told that they were not necessary and that the construction company could do whatever they wanted. Actually, I didn't need the sightlines. I already knew exactly where they would be. I just thought it was an important part of the process. With all this being said, I would like to discuss more potential remedies for the second story windows, as that I feel that my privacy, my views, my natural sunlight, and my air, everything will be compromised. So, such as, again, asking, adjusting the actual floor plan so that the bedroom could be on the opposite side of the story facing west. One of the bedroom windows being raised to 6 feet. Maybe block sightlines with a shutter pergola faux barrier type structure on the roof. Additionally, I feel that the way that the second story addition floor plan is planned in conjunction with the rest of the first floor, I believe the second story will also be used as another separate dwelling unit. When I mentioned this to the planner, I was told that that was not possible because of the square footage of the second story. But, as I know, all it takes is another permit, a request for an exemption, and it could be easily changed. So, encircling back to the new garage, I am wondering why this permit was not made public and why it is now attached to the new permit? If I had known this, I would have addressed concerns about it before we arrived at the place we are today. I would like to know how this works with respect to taking a permit out to build a garage, a whole new structure, with the intention of it not being a garage. Once it's been given a certificate of occupancy by the city as a garage, then someone could reapply for a permit to turn it into an ADU, another permit fee and switch and ask for exemptions. Because now this garage can become a home that does not have to comply with a 5-foot setback. Why is there only a 3-foot setback to my property line but a 5-foot setback from the rear property line? I think again, in the spirit of ADUs, it's to use a grandfathered garage and transfer it into a living unit, not to create a new structure to be a garage and then switch it to a living unit in order not to have to conform to living conditions. After this, if the owner asks for another permit to build an actual garage in the place of the one that was demolished, will this be approved by the city? I was wondering also if the board could advise me if there's an ordinance about garage placement in single-family property zones. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but that a detached garage is usually in line with the driveway on the opposite side of the house and that vehicles are required to be parked and stored in this line. So, for all of these reasons, you can see why I am sort of fearful about we're talking about a triplex at 725. I share these thoughts with you today because I feel that all of these concerns should be considered, how this affects our neighborhood and my property. I believe when it comes to new construction, especially second story new construction, that the owner of 725 should have to give more compromise to the existing residences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board.
Chair, I believe this is the opportunity for the applicant to respond.
Thank you. I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mike Garrigus, I'm representing the owner on the project. I'd just like to correct some comments that were made. The garage was permitted in its location with the windows that are there, that is on the approved set of plans, that plan has been approved and work has commenced and completed. So, and there is nothing wrong with the placement of that garage. There is some work that is going on in the backyard as happens during a construction process. The intent is to landscape it as the project moves forward. The property is proposing trees in the back is additional screening. So that, I think, was sort of a misunderstanding on the appellant's part. In terms of the privacy, which is really the issue, and I'd like to address that. Shipra, I'm not sure if they saw all of A7 that I sent you. That's an exhibit that I did do and I'm not sure why the appellant never saw it. I did provide it at the time or discussed it with the staff. That's an additional document that wasn't required that I provided, which was a site plan that locates the two adjacent parcels, their windows, the proposed landscaping that we're doing to address the privacy, and also the view lines. Also, there was superimposing the view lines onto the two elevations to show that the landscaping that we're proposing on the side, which is what Shipra mentioned about the shrubs that would be, once they grow, they would be in the 10 to 12 range. They completely obstruct any privacy issue that the neighbor has. And we purposely showed her property and the adjacent property on the site plan, the length of the landscaping that we're doing, the view angles that would happen, and that it is all completely obstructed. So her issue about privacy has been addressed. We've shown it in the documents. We will be held to provide that landscaping and the owner wants to provide that landscaping. So all of her issues about privacy have been addressed. The owner has been very cooperative with planning staff, reducing windows dramatically. And that's sort of a side note that I had, a question I had for the board. And that's sort of a side note that I had, a question I had for the board. A question is, you know, you're requiring the landscaping to address the privacy issue. We did the landscaping, so, and then in addition to doing the landscaping, we still reduced the windows, which seems like a double whammy. We, we provided the landscaping as the buffer, and then we also need to reduce the windows, which we did. So I think we've gone above and beyond to address the concerns of the neighbor. This is a two-story house. There will be windows on the two-story. The ones that would face her backyard, there are no windows on that side, so she has no worry about privacy issues in the backyard. The entire side of her house, all the windows on that sidewall are, will be provided with shrubbery in that view angle, completely obstructing any of the windows, the sightlines from the property. And they're at the six-foot height, so if you were standing there, you won't even be able to see out the window to her property. The only ones are the bedroom ones, and if you had noticed the plan, that is the bed wall, which means it would be nightstands in front of those windows, which means nobody's standing at the window. And it probably wouldn't have the windows open without curtains on it anyway, on that, in that location. So all those privacy issues have been addressed. We have exhibits to show it. We've been cooperative with city staff, reducing windows. We reduced the windows on the other side for the other neighbor to address the concerns of that neighbor. We had the tree in the back to address other privacy concerns, even though we have three times, almost three times, the rear yard setback required. So we, we think we've gone above and beyond, when you consider that there's already a landscape buffer, and we additionally reduced the window sizes. So I think it would be really unfortunate to make this owner do any additional work. I think we developed a very attractive front facade that gives the appearance of being very consistent with the house, which has been a goal of mine for 30 years on all the houses I've ever done. When you do a second floor, you try to make it look as much, as much as possible, like it had been the original structure. So that is always a difficulty to do, but you try to add architectural features to make it look like it, like it had been there. So the idea that there would just be high transom windows along the whole front of the house, I think is just a very odd architectural statement. It would make it look like, you know, prison tower or something, really ridiculous architecture. I think we've addressed those issues. The only windows that are low are on the bed wall, which, well, like I said, would have a nightstand in front of it, and nobody's standing at that window. In addition to that, we have landscaping that addresses any of the privacy issues. And if you look, if, I don't know if Shipra can show you A7 that I provided, but it's actually a glancing view down the side, which means the landscaping would have even more obstruction than if you were looking at a right angle to that landscaping. You're actually glancing at it sort of on a 45, which means it would be even denser when you looked at the neighbor. And the Carolina Cherrys do a very nice job of growing up and hiding any visual through, in addition to the fact, like I said, that it's a glancing view to the property. So I, I appreciate that the neighbor is addressing their concerns. I think they're, they have every right to. I think that's fine, but I think we have addressed all those concerns. The garage has been done appropriately, has done by permit. Any windows that are on it were on the approved set of plans, of which we've provided copies of, which are part of this document. I don't believe the applicant comments or recommendations are valid. I don't believe that they're necessary. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigus. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call at 1-8238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us, as it may take a couple of minutes for the first caller to get through the line. Ms. Clerk? Please let us know if we have a caller.
Planning Board, Planning Board Chair, at this point, we do not have callers on the line. However, do I say we wait three minutes as we just opened the phone lines?
I'm sorry, can I make a comment to Shipra? I had sent her a picture.
Ms. Hawkins? I'm sorry, the, at this time, the time is reserved for people who wish to call in and make comments.
So just an update, we still do not have any callers. Chair of the Union, we have waited a little bit more than two and a half minutes, and we haven't received any callers, and don't have any in the queue.
All right, we'll move on. There being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Ms. Hawkins, this is your opportunity, or your representative, wish to make any further comments? You may have a maximum time of 10 minutes.
Hi, thank you. I had sent a picture to Shipra that I believe was going to be shared with the other members. It's a picture that looks directly. Mike, I understand that you are the planner for this, and you, of course, are going to say that you've made all kinds of, you know, concessions, but you don't live in my house. And the reason I'm showing you this picture here is, this is a picture that is out of my bathroom shower area. And if you use a reference point, you can see that there is an old pole there for the electrical that's on the roof. That right there is where all of the windows will be that will look directly down into my bedroom and my bathroom. And when things are said like, "Well, we'll keep the curtains closed, so don't worry about it," that's not part of a permit process. And when you say things, "Oh, a bed will be in the way," or "There'll be dressers in front of the windows," that's not part of a permit process. Anybody can do whatever they want, once their windows are in place and once they're in their bedroom. And I really feel that that is not a great way to say things that you're saying. I really don't. My concerns are much bigger than that. You also talk about screening on the sides with, with planting. It will take 20 years for that to grow up so that it could hide even anything that is going to go on the other side of that fence. I, I just, I'm sorry, I don't understand. I, I need a little bit, I need a little bit more than just, the curtains will be closed as part of a permit. Who says that even landscaping or hedging will be maintained? What if three years from now, he decides that he doesn't want it there and takes it Also, couldn't someone maybe also tell me exactly, again, how many windows have to
Have you completed your comments, Ms. Hawkins?
Yes, thank you.
At this time, does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You may have a maximum time of 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, I would. Mike Garrigus, representing the owner. Those comments about the bedroom and the placement were side comments. The main comment relating to what is required and what we did is the landscaping. The picture she showed is with no landscaping, so obviously, there would be an issue. We provided landscaping, we did exhibits, page A7, that showed the view angles of the entire wall, not even the windows, the entire wall of the house with the landscape buffer that is acceptable by code. That is what we're providing. It doesn't take 20 years for a Carolina Cherry to grow. You'll have growth within the first year or two, you'll have the full screening. We've used it on many projects over many years, in addition to my own home. It grows very quickly, it has full exposure. If for some reason it dies, this, that is, this landscaping, Shipra can speak to this, it's a requirement as per this approval that it is maintained. If it is not maintained, code compliance will, could know about it and make sure that it's remedied. He doesn't have any wish to look into the bedrooms. He's providing that because he is trying to alleviate any issue she has. It's in his interest also to maintain it for good relationship with the neighbor. So there's no benefit to have them die off. He needs to plant new trees and pay costs to put new trees in, new shrubbery in. There's no benefit on his part. He's going to buy it once, he's going to water it properly and care for it, so he doesn't need to buy it again. That's a code-compliant issue that she would be able to complain about. I'm sure Shipra can explain that to her. It's a requirement that is done, he is providing it, it is going to alleviate any of the issues she has. The picture she's showing is obviously without any buffer, which is not what we're proposing. Her picture is not relevant to this, in the sense that we are providing a landscape buffer. It will need to be maintained. If it's not maintained, the city can mandate it that it is, which means he will have to do it all over again, which is not, is what he would do, because then he'd have to buy everything one more time, which doesn't make any sense. He wants those to grow, so he doesn't have to buy hedges every year or two. That would make no sense. It's in any, it's in no one's interest to have him continually buying hedges. So obviously, he's going to maintain them, and it's going to take care of the view on both sides. So that's on Exhibit 87 that I sent, if the board needs to see it. But we did view angles out of all those windows to that side of the property and to the other side, so we're providing screening that shields the entire side from those windows. And again, we've, even though we have this, that will alleviate the, the privacy issue, we went the extra step of reducing the windows, heights of it, increasing the sill heights to alleviate any view out. So I think we've gone above and beyond. We did screening and reduced the windows, which I think is all that can be asked of this applicant and this owner. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigus. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Yes, Chair Attenan, thank you for the opportunity. I would like to start with addressing the issue regarding the construction of garage. Construction of a garage is not subject to any planning entitlement and is a regular building plan check process, which is not required to get mailed out to the neighboring property owners. That is the reason why noticing of construction of garage was not provided to neighbors. Additionally, the code requires that the garage be set back three feet from the side and the rear property line. In this case, the subject lot has a 7.5-feet public utility easement at the back of the property along the rear property line, and that's why the garage has been set back 7.5 feet from the rear property line. No permits have been submitted for conversion of the garage to an ADU currently. Other than that, even if they were to be converted to an ADU, they cannot be used as a short-term rental. Number of windows on the front facade are five, and out of which, three are non-bedroom windows. Due to the concerns expressed regarding the privacy, the non-bedroom windows have been reduced in size and have been kept at six feet of height as measured from the floor of the second story. The bedroom windows, which also are in the front of the, front facade of the second story, are at a height of 44 inches because of the EGRIS requirement. Although only one bedroom window is required for EGRIS, one of our neighborhood compatibility checklist criteria specifies that the proposed addition has to have 360-degree architectural compatibility with the existing house. In order to maintain that compatibility, both the windows have been kept at the same height. Additionally, these windows would also be required to provide sufficient sunlight and air within the bedroom. Regarding the landscaping, conditions have been placed for the, on the project, and this is condition number 11 and 12, which requires the applicant to provide landscape screening along the side property lines. And that screening has to be at a height of 10 to 12 feet, which is allowed per our code, to provide privacy or maintain privacy between the neighboring properties. That's all I had. Thank you.
Chair Attenan, if I can just add?
Yes, Mr. Ramirez.
A couple of items. One thing, in listening to the appellate's comments, that I wanted to hopefully, and for discussion for the, for the board, is on Condition 11, that refers to the landscaping. I think it would be important to, just to make it very clear, that the landscaping that is required as part of this project shall be maintained for the life of the project. So if, if you are to, during the discussion, if the, if the boards would so consider that, that would hopefully address an issue that if the landscaping were to be removed at a later date, they would be in noncompliance with their conditions of approval, and therefore, they would, that would be a corrective action. That's one item. The, the other, when it comes to the window sizes in the front, as was mentioned by Shipra and through the work that was been done with staff, if you notice, the, the one window that is right above the staircase that leads down, it, from the existing, you know, finished floor height of that second floor, it's going to be, the bottom of that window pane's going to be six feet. But the reality of it is that with the staircase, and the reason that it's actually stepping down, going towards the front of the building, it's actually going to, there's no way someone could stand even in that area to be able to see. The same thing was done with the bathroom. So the issue, which is on the other side, closest to the appellate's property. So the issue with the two windows in the front, there was a discussion about raising the height of those windows, but the reality of it is that one of those windows has to comply with that requirement. So what that effectively means is that if we were to, in essence, have one be at a code-required height and another one at six feet, now you have this asymmetry to the front of the building, and now it looks really, it's not, it's not consistent with the 360-degree architecture that Shipra was mentioning. So I say that because I, I want, I'm empathetic to the concerns. It's a balance many times, and we're trying to address that. As you saw, the side building facade was, in essence, left to just one window face on that side to try to address that concern. So between landscaping, looking at the building and its placement, we're trying to balance both the needs of the applicant that's looking to develop the site, as well as the, the needs of the appellate on the neighboring, and the properties on the neighboring sides to try to address privacy. So it's not always perfect, but we feel that as far as the presentation of the project before you now has made considerable strides to get at that and address the concerns as best as can, and still be in compliance with the code. So I just wanted to bring those things to your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Does the board have any questions of staff, the appellate, or the applicant? Vice Chair Rosori?
Thank you, Chair. For staff, please. If the applicant went through the permit process, he can turn the garage into an ADU, correct?
That is correct, Vice Chair. That is correct.
Okay. Currently, if you wanted to rent out the top floor, anybody could rent out the top floor of the house, and the bottom floor, they could do that, right?
They will have to go through ADU permit processing in order to convert a portion of their house to an ADU.
Okay. And then, my last question is, it seems to me, at this stage, the house has less windows
less windows. The applicant could have more windows per code if he wanted to. But it seems like he's been very flexible and he has a lot less windows than he normally could. Would that be correct?
Our code does not specify a number of windows applicants should provide. However, it does specify that the proposed addition has to be architecturally compatible and should have massing and breakage along the facade. And one of the ways to achieve that is by incorporating windows.
Yes. In looking at the house, and this is what I do for a living, it's a little odd. I mean, this house is, in some places, is windowless. So it does, to me, some of the house looks a little odd because it does lack windows. So what I'm saying is, it seems like the applicant has really done their best to comply with some of the wishes of the neighbors.
That is correct, Vice Chair Rosori. The applicant has removed all the windows along the south-facing facade to ensure that none of the windows are there facing the neighbor's property, appellant's property. All the windows are located along the front facade of the second story.
Okay. No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gambora?
Yeah, a question for staff. Just to be clear, the applicant's not asking for any concessions or any exemptions or adjustments or anything. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Hadian or Ms. Lu?
I have had a question for staff. What realistically is the expectation of privacy when the code allows, obviously, the building of a second story? How much of an expectation are the neighbors on either side or behind really expected to have if the code allows for that second story?
Thank you for your question. So we do have neighborhood compatibility checklist, which has two things in place that ensures privacy. The first one is screening, where you're providing landscape screening. And the second one is placement of the windows such that it alternates with the neighbor's windows and there are no direct views from one house to the other. In this case, as can be seen, there are no windows which would directly look into the neighbor's backyard or the house. All the windows face to the east, which is the front of the property, and all that complies with our code requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. It's for staff. Right now, when someone's adding a garage, it's being counted toward their floor area ratio. But if in the future they convert that, it's not counted, right?
So depending on the location of the garage, it depends. For instance, in this case, the garage is located towards the back of the property, so they'll get a 500 square feet exemption, which won't be counted towards the floor area ratio. And then in future, if the garage is converted to an ADU, again, this would not impact the floor area ratio because the new ordinance does not take into consideration FAR and you have to build an ADU. Then you have to convert an existing structure to an ADU. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I have a couple of questions of Ms. Rogers.
Sure.
The appellant showed us a picture where you could see utility pole. Currently, how far setback is that utility pole from the appellant's property line?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question, Chair. Maybe the applicant might be in a better position to provide that answer. Currently, the setback, I can tell you the setback of the existing house from the property line of the applicant's property along the south side, and that is at 5 feet 10 inches. However, I wouldn't be able to determine its distance from the appellant's window. I don't have the data.
Well, probably that's maybe a foot in, another maybe one to two feet further into the applicant's house. So maybe it's about seven feet 10 inches or seven and a half feet somewhere there. Would that be a fair statement?
Well, if you have to make a guess, maybe a little bit more than that because if they have conforming setback, they'll at least have to provide a five-foot setback for their house.
No, no. I'm talking about the utility pole. How far the utility pole is from the property line of the appellant? So if the current setback of the wall is about five feet 10 inches, the utility pole is maybe another foot, foot and a half into the applicant's lot. Would that be a fair statement?
Just to be clear, Chair.
You have two setbacks, though. The applicant and the appellant, they both have setbacks.
I understand. No, no. I'm only talking about what's the current position of the utility pole?
Chair, just if I can get it, just to clarify. The question that you're asking is the masthead for the electrical, where the electrical feed comes from over the top. It's an approximation, but I think Shipra's saying that that wall face of the building to the property line is approximately five feet. And then if that masthead is set in or actually protrudes through the roof, you're right, it could be a foot, it could be eight inches.
Exactly.
But we'd be speculating. I mean, at this point, the hard line would be the wall face. And then from the exhibits that were shown, is there continuing that property line back and then sitting above it and that area being where the restroom facility is?
Usually, those poles come in through the wall. So the wall is four inches, so it's going to come through the wall. So it's about five, six feet and so, or somewhere there. If we take a look at that pole, would that be the exact location where the second story starts? Or the second story starts behind that pole? And if it does, how far behind that pole does it start?
And I would say, Chair, if we can direct that question to Mr. Gergos.
Can I answer that question?
Yes, of course, Mr. Gergos. Go ahead.
Yeah, the utility line is happening on the sidewall. It happens forward a little bit from the property line. But actually, what you may be getting to is the window we're talking about in the bedroom is actually 25 feet center of the property, basically, from that. So that window that we're talking about has a 25-foot setback.
And would that?
From the property.
And would that be the first window?
That's the first window that she has an issue with in the bedroom. It has a 25-foot setback.
Would that be the edge of the first window closest to the appellant's lot? Or would that be the middle or the end?
That's the side of the, I'll say 20. I don't want to say. It's the side of the window to the property line is at least 20 feet in addition to her five. So from the edge of the window to her house is 25 feet, which is, that is the center of the property. You can't be further away than that.
I understand.
There's a 25-foot setback on that window.
Now, the utility pole that's there that receives the electrical for the house, would that be, is that set? The current location?
It's in the wall. So what's showing there is five foot off the property line. That's the sidewall of the existing house. The pipe is coming down the wall. So that pipe is five feet away. The window that we're talking about, the side of it, is an additional 15 feet from there.
Bear with me. Let me finish the question before you answer.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
The current location of the utility pole, where does the second story start? Does it start before that location of the utility pole? Or is it behind that utility pole? Or is it almost flush with the utility pole?
It starts behind it.
By how much?
Towards the garage, and it starts into the house because there's a setback on the second floor, an additional five feet. So it is back and to the side is where the second floor starts.
How far back?
It's probably five to six feet forward of the back of the property. So the addition is happening maybe five or six feet behind that pole. And then it's four feet away from the appellant. That's the corner of the building. And the window we're talking about is an additional 15, so.
I understand. I see the cutoff there. Okay. And who can answer this question? What size are the initial trees or the shrubbery that's going to be planted when it's purchased?
Um, go ahead.
We could specify. I think generally, the Carolina Cherrys come in gallon and five gallons. So we would do a five-gallon that starts out at about six feet and then it grows very quickly. It's a very quick drawing and growing plants. And it's used for this purpose in many cities.
Mike, can I say something, Mike?
Yes. I don't know. I don't know if you can.
Who's that?
At my age, I think I'd like at least a 25-gallon container. I'd eat big trees. I don't think I have a lot of time to wait around for them to grow that high.
They're only going, they're only going to be going another, they only need to go about another four feet higher than six.
I like big trees.
Well, let me ask this question, Mr. Gergos. Do these plants come in 25-gallon setups?
Chair?
I'm not sure if they, it wouldn't be a 25-gallon. It would be a a box at that point, and I'm not sure of the box size, but usually it's five-gallon.
24-inch box.
Mr. Ramirez?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for recognizing staff. What I would suggest is, we understand there's some height requirements and the code has some, once you hit certain heights along those side property lines, we have to be cognizant of what the requirements under the code are. What I would suggest is, we know there has to be screening. That's a condition of approval. The city has a landscape architect on call that reviews the landscape plans for this. The actual species and the size, they can propose a particular species and a growth rate based on that type. What I would suggest is, we know what the maximum height is and we know that there's an interest from the board, I anticipate, to have it grow and be as lush as possible, as quickly as possible. So one thing I would say is, if we want to maybe add that language into the condition and then allow the landscape architect on the city to actually confirm the species, confirm the box size, whether it's a 24-inch box, 36-inch box, whatever it's going to be, but do it in such a way that, once it's installed, it's going to be suitable for the site, right? So we don't have uplift or other things. And that it's done in such a way so that it's ensured that the species will have a long life and allow for evergreen in there so that you can have that ongoing privacy. So if we can put those kind of parameters to maybe the condition, then the obligation, the responsibility and obligation to ensure that that gets implemented would be through the conditions of approval with the applicant as well as city staff.
I appreciate the clarification. Also, in the photo, we saw some sort of a corrugated fencing. Is that on top of the, who does that belong to?
That is the neighbor's fence.
Ms. Hawkins. How high is that?
Higher than allowed.
That is just on top of the existing six-foot fence. It's just a two-foot over that.
So a total of eight?
It's not actually hooked to the fence.
Right. So you have a total of eight feet on that?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions. Any other questions? Okay. I now declare the hearing closed and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? Vice Chair Rosori?
Okay, I'll lead off. You know, I hate to see this whole neighbor against neighbor thing. I walked, I know the neighborhood very well. I grew up two blocks from there and I've lived there for 28 years. The compatibility is definitely there. There's at least six two-story homes on that block. In looking at the plans on this property, I would say that it would be a very nice home. It would definitely bring up the values of the neighborhood. I hear the applicant and the concerns about ADUs and junior ADUs. And I have to say, I just, that's the world we're in now, unfortunately. I voiced my strong concern about this back in January. And this is going to be the new world we live in. If somebody wants to pull a permit to have a junior ADU or an ADU, there's just not a lot we can do about it. And I think our neighborhoods will suffer because of it. Regarding the windows, I've looked at a lot of houses in my day, and when I saw the plans of this, I just thought, wow, this is almost a windowless house in some places. And windows make the house. Light makes the house. And I would say that in reviewing all the dialogue, going back and forth to both sides, looking at the staff notation on this, I think the applicant has been very generous in complying with some of the requests. And I don't know, I don't think there's much more you can put on this applicant. He does have a right, and he certainly, he's done everything to code. So I think at this point, he's done everything that you've asked for and then some. I think that, and regarding the Carolina Cherrys, I know that's specimen of tree or a plant, and it does grow very quickly. You can get that thing to 15 feet in a matter of three years. You can certainly get it above eight feet and two. So, but we'll take the advisement of our staff here and we'll work with the arborist to make sure that we have the right plant that will grow at the right rate to supply this privacy that you seek. Based on this information, I'm going to agree with staff on denying the appeal.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rosori. Who would like to go next?
I can go. I actually first want to commend the city, the appellant, and the applicant for all the work that they have put in thus far to try to make things work. It's very clear that there's a lot of effort put forth. And so I thank all of you for that. I totally understand appellant's concerns. And I think I agree with my colleague in terms of what applicant has done in changing the windows, raising the height. And there's, you know, not much more that applicants can do from what I've seen in terms of, you know, changing bedroom locations and all that. I think the windows are set in a way where, because there are no windows on that south side, that, you know, the rooms have to be put into certain locations where there are actually now existing windows. If there's anything that can be done, I know typically landscape goes in last, but if there's anything that can be done with putting in that species that starts growing quickly, like as soon as possible before they build that second story, so it actually starts to give you that screening that you would like as opposed to having to wait a couple more years after everything goes up. That would be great, but I don't know what the feasibility of that is. But with that, I am also in favor of the staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Lu. Ms. Hadian?
Yes, thank you very much to staff and to Ms. Hawkins for their comments and the presentation. I looked into the plans and I wanted to speak about a few items about the privacy. The applicant, as I looked at the drawings, has applied as many changes as possible to address the privacy concern by landscaping added to the side yard. The window area has been reduced. The window height has been reduced where possible. No new window added to the first floor level facing 721 North Catalina. Correct me if I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. And, um, all of these changes and adjustments have been accomplished in addition to maintaining the architectural integrity of the building, including the massing style and three-sixty-degree, um, design compatibility while also complying with the R1 development standard. It's a very difficult thing to include all that in designing a single-family, uh, project. And, um, their effort includes, um, the egress height of the window C. I do understand Ms. Hawkins' concern about the ADUs, um, addition to the floor area, short-term rentals and all of that. But the applicant has done everything by right and they're doing everything by right. This is not like a spot zoning only for this property or this project. This is R1 development standards and they have complied to all. And, um, the ADUs are state law. It's, uh, even if, I know that the garage is under a separate permit, um, but they could just without having, uh, a garage, propose, um, an ADU at the same time they're doing the addition to the house. And, um, for the proposed garage, um, you mentioned that there is only three-foot setback to the side that's adjacent to your property and five foot, which I don't understand, it's about seven and a half feet setback, um, to the, to the, um, other side where there is a utility is meant. But, um, uh, this garage is a proposed, uh, structure, a new structure. And assume that the applicant did not have the garage, um, uh, did actually have the garage. One of those that come with zero setback right on property line and, um, uh, without any space between the structure and, uh, uh, your lot. So, um, at least right now, the proposed project has three feet distance from the property line. With all that, I can support denying the appeal and supporting the project.
Thank you, Ms. Hadian. Mr. Gamboa?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I wanna concur with my, um, the fellow board members here that the project, I think this, uh, process has, um, allowed the, um, appellant to get some concessions out of the, um, neighbor who is following everything by the rules. Uh, there's no exceptions, everything's, you know, done, um, by code. And, uh, I get the concerns about ADUs and everything, but all that speculative. Right now, it's just a big house with the garage. So, um, and that's perfectly allowed and encouraged in Burbank. So, um, you know, they did a good job with addressing some of these concerns. Um, but, you know, property rights gotta go both ways in, in the circumstances. So I think that this medium is the best, uh, outcome for this situation. So I would be in favor of denying the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Gamboa. Uh, Ms. Hawkins, I believe you have been able to extract, uh, a great deal of concessions from the neighboring, uh, owner, the applicant. Uh, in fact, uh, raising of the windows to six feet, um, I mean, I would think that's above and beyond. And, and removing windows from one side of the building, uh, shows a great deal of flexibility and understanding for your concerns. And I think that's, you take credit for that. It, it was your involvement and, uh, you pursuing the issue that you were able to, uh, achieve all this. You were able to bring it to the city's attention and the applicant's attention and, and shared your views and concerns and the applicant equally responded to that. So the reason why I asked the questions about the setbacks of the bedroom windows, because obviously the first one is a bathroom window. So usually, um, I, I'm not gonna speculate as to which way person's gonna be when they enter a bathroom. Are they gonna be looking out of the window or their back is gonna be to the window? But nevertheless, Mr. Gergos answered the question as to how, what the setback is of the first bedroom window and that was twenty feet. So from the picture that you showed us, I, I wouldn't even think that that particular window would be able to look into your, uh, bathroom. I'm assuming that was the bathroom you took a picture from. Based on the positioning of that window, because of the corrugated fencing that you have up there, because of the line of sight would probably be blocked. And as far as the vegetation's concerned, that's a, a double protection. And, uh, anything that grows to ten feet would more than adequately block any views from that window into your property. So, uh, that setback is important because it's not the first, it's not close, it's not a window that's closest to your property line. It is a window that's twenty feet away from your property line. So in that regard, I think that gives you the added protection. And again, for the, uh, aesthetics, it's important to have something that's pleasing to the eye. I'm sure you wouldn't want a house right next to you that has one window up and the other window down as Mr. Ramirez described it. Uh, and, and I think an amendment to the effect that, as suggested by Mr. Ramirez, should, uh, be added to the resolution or the conditions of construction where the landscaping or the, the shrubbery that's going to go in is, is the maximum. I, I'm not sure how to phrase this so that they have the flexibility to be able to make the necessary, uh, choices. But I would say that it would probably has to be the maximum size that could fit under the conditions of this particular project in that regard. Uh, so maybe that should be, or, or if anyone has any other suggestions at this time, I'm willing to, uh, listen to it. And, uh, Mr. Rosari is anxious to make a suggestion. So in that regard, I, I would, I would say that I too would be, uh, I'm, I'm in agreement with my colleagues and, uh, denying the, uh, appeal. So, uh, anyone like to make a motion with, with the amendment? Vashir Rosari?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make the motion and then we can, we can discuss the amendment if it's not, uh, appropriate. A resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank denying an appeal of, uh, community development director's approval of project number eighteen dash zero 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 five four six three for a single-family special development permit. Therefore approving the project, proposed two-story addition and remodel to an existing one thousand two square foot, single-family residence. And the two, uh, amendments would be to one, uh, staff and the applicant to work with, uh, staff's arborist to make sure that we have the appropriate species for that, for that area. And the second one would be to, um, make sure that the, the plants are there, uh, in perpetuity of, of the, of the property. So as long as that property is there, those plants would have to be put in place. Now with that, that's my motion and I have a question. Would that have to run with the deed?
Um, what I would suggest is on condition number eleven, everything vice chair noted, but just adding the language, the landscaping screening shall be maintained for the life of the project. And for the life of the project.
The project or the property?
The project. So in other words, the actual development. So if the site was raised as a future date, we'd be looking at this entirely differently.
Okay. Concur.
All right, I do wanna make some, uh, a comment or not. The resolution reads, project number eighteen dash zero 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 five four six three. And when I read the hearing notes, it said twenty dash zero zero four six six seven. Now, I just want for clarifica, I mean, for purpose of clarification and the record, what is the actual project number? So that there's no confusion later as to, well, you know, we were talking about the wrong project.
Sure. Uh, Shipra, is it the eighteen number?
Yes, it is. The project number is eighteen dash zero 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 five four six three.
All right, so, so, uh, that was a typographical error, uh, initially when I read the twenty dash zero zero four six six seven and the correct project number is eighteen dash zero 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 five four six three. Okay, all right, uh.
Mr. Artikonyan, I also have a question. The, um, amendments that were made is only to condition number eleven?
I believe so. That's what Mr. Ramirez is, is referring to that addresses the screening.
Yeah, the landscaping eleven A, we can add that language in, into that eleven A. We just add, expand it.
But I'm also concerned about the size of the plant that is going to initially go in. I would like it to be the maximum size allowed.
Correct.
Under the circumstances.
But that's where the arborist will come in and make the recommendation.
Yeah, um, could I suggest the word, uh, landscape architect, city's landscape architect? Because that's the person that actually reviews it.
All right, uh, city's landscape architect will advise or specify the maximum size of the plant allowed under the project condition.
Correct. And we can, if you so, if you're so inclined, uh, we can work on the specific language, but we understand that it's have the landscape architect, the city's landscape architect, look at a landscape plan that includes the proper screening per, per the plans that were approved and ensure that the species that goes in is appropriate for the location that grows as quickly as possible to meet the maximum height that was, uh, conditioned and approved as part of the plants.
I think we're all on the same page.
Perfect.
Well, uh, there was a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, actually, before we vote on this, is there, is there any way to influence the, when this, the, um, that scre, the shrubbery is planted? Or is that just something that it just happens after everything's completed?
The, the only thing, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Chair, if I may speak.
Yes.
Apologize. Sorry, sorry, Board Member Lou. The only, we can work with them on that. The only concern will be is, if it's a construction site and they're planting, uh, landscaping, typically it goes in towards the end just because what our concern is that, uh, they install the plants early on during construction and then they have to do grading, grubbing or construction activity. And then typically what happens is, there's a potential for those plants to be damaged or trees to be damaged. And then basically it negates all the growth that would have happened during that period of, under construction. So I think you'll be assured that before we issue the certificate of occupancy to the project, that the landscaping will go in, um, post haste before that, but at a point where it's not gonna be potentially impacted by construction activity.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Ms. Hadian's second motion, is that correct?
Um, is it possible to, um, uh, read the resolution one more time, uh, Chair, um, Vashir Rosari? Then I second it, so, as amended.
Why don't we have, uh, Mr. Ramirez read it because he's taken, uh, ample notes.
So this would be, this would be for the actual, just the resolution you want it read? Board Member Hadian, okay.
Yes.
This is a, so the board is considering, uh, by motion of the vice chair and awaiting a second, a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank denying an appeal of the community development director's approval of the project number eighteen dash zero 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 five four six three for a single-family special development permit. Therefore approving the project, uh, proposed two-story addition and remodel to an existing one thousand square foot, single-family residence.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended, uh, to condition eleven, yeah.
Second.
I have a second. Uh, Mr. Clerk, may we take the vote?
Planning Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Lou?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosari?
Yes.
And Chair Tegunian?
Yes.
The appeal is denied with a vote of five, five to zero.
Thank you, everyone, for participating. Now we're gonna be moving to item number two. Now's the time and place for the hearing and on project number two zero dash zero 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 five four six concerning an application for CUP to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Yakumi, at three nine one nine Riverside Drive. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
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 I'm gonna just disclose that I did receive a call on my cellphone from someone I did not know, that was asking me a lot of questions about the project, but I didn't have any knowledge about the project. This was like two weeks prior. I guess they saw the sign in front of the building and they knew I was on the planning board and they were asking me a bunch of questions about it. I told them I didn't know anything about it. So just to that measure and to, to, to be transparent, I did receive that call.
Thank you, Mr. Rosari. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
No.
Ditto.
Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
I believe all the written communications have been included in your agenda packet.
Will the representative of the community development department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us, please?
Good evening, Chair Artikonyan and members of the board. My name is Greg Mirza Avakin and I'm an associate planner with the planning division. Tonight, I will be presenting the proposed conditional use permit request for the property located at thirty-nine nineteen Riverside Drive. The applicant Cindy Block, on behalf of Yakumi, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption, a type forty-one alcoholic beverage control license at a full-service restaurant which is currently under construction. The construction of the restaurant is expected to be completed before the end of this year. The previous use at this location was a dry cleaning establishment. The sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption requires a CUP in the MDC three zone. The property does not have any previous planning permits or Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control licenses allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages. The granting of the proposed CUP will allow the applicant to apply for a type forty-one license with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption. The sale of beer and wine for offsite consumption will not be allowed under this permit. Here is an aerial view of the project location. The restaurant is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Riverside Drive and North Maple Street. This location falls within a commercial cluster on Riverside Drive between North Pass Avenue and North Kenwood Street. The project site is Zone MDC three, Media District General Business. The properties to the north of the project site are Zone MDC three and MDC two, Media District Limited Commercial. This area primarily consists of office uses. To the east and west of the project site, the zoning is MDC three, consisting of various commercial uses, including restaurants and professional services. The MDR four, Media District, R four zone property to the northwest of the project site is developed with an office tower. To the south of the project site, the zoning is also MDC three with uses including restaurants, professional services and a hotel. Further south, the zoning is MDR four, developed with multifamily apartments. Census tract three one one six where this restaurant will be located roughly corresponds with the Media District's specific plan area. There are twenty-seven establishments with active ABC licenses. Yakumi is shown in yellow. The majority of these licenses are type forty-one or type forty-seven licenses, both of which are for the sale of alcohol for onsite consumption. If approved, this CUP will allow for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption only at the full-service restaurant. The approval of this permit will not authorize the sale of alcohol for offsite consumption. The consumption of alcohol will be allowed during the business hours of ten AM to midnight daily. Last call will be thirty minutes before closure. Under the proposed permit, there will be no exterior or interior alterations made to the building to accommodate the sale of alcohol. As shown in the current slide, the area that will be dedicated to the storage of alcohol will be confined to a lockable cabinet in the kitchen. The kitchen area is shown in yellow. The approved plans for the restaurant show a maximum occupancy of thirty-seven within the indoor dining room, shown in green, and twenty-two for the patio seating area, shown in blue. When construction is complete, the restaurant will provide five onsite parking spaces available only to customers. On January nine, twenty twenty, the community development department approved an administrative use permit to convert the tenant space into a restaurant. Parking supply was analyzed and conditions of approval were included which required the restaurant to provide monthly parking passes to the restaurant employees. The restaurant will be required to provide evidence of compliance with this requirement prior to the issuance of a business license to operate. The proposed CUP to allow the sale of beer and wine at this restaurant will not trigger increased demand. The proposed CUP to allow the sale of beer and wine at this restaurant will not trigger increased demand for parking because the sale of beer and wine would be incidental to the operation of the full-service restaurant. Staff finds that the proposed request for the sale of beer and wine at this restaurant is consistent with the character of the commercial strip on Riverside Drive. There are similar uses throughout the immediate area and this restaurant is consistent with the existing neighborhood scale commercial uses nearby. At least ten days before today, one thousand and thirty-one notices were sent to the property owners and occupants within a one thousand foot radius of the project site and a sign was posted on the project site. A notice of public hearing was also published in the Los Angeles Times. Staff received two comments regarding this project. The two individuals' primary concerns were about potential crime and noise associated with public drunkenness as well as parking issues with the potential of restaurant patrons parking on residential streets and blocking private driveways. Staff has determined that the incidental nature of the proposed use will not cause a negative impact and is compatible with the loud uses in that zone and in the surrounding area. If this CUP is approved, the sale of beer and wine would be incidental to the operation of a sit-down restaurant where at least sixty-five percent of the gross sales revenue must be from food sales. Further, the conditions of approval require that there is no live entertainment or dancing at this establishment and that amplified music can only be played indoors. Exterior speakers would not be allowed unless a conditional use permit is approved first. Therefore, staff can recommend the approval of a resolution to the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving project number twenty dash zero 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 five four six allowing for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with an operation of a bona fide public eating place located at thirty-nine nineteen Riverside Drive based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation and staff is available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board, you will have a maximum time of fifteen minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, board members, thank you for having me. I'm here on behalf of the ac- excuse me, applicant Yakumi Restaurant, opening a new location at three nine one nine Riverside. They have applied for a CUP to allow beer and wine for onsite consumption at the new full-service restaurant. Applicants have also applied for a type forty-one license from the Department of ABC for the sale of beer and wine at a bona fide eating establishment. As our planner, uh, mentioned, the location is within the MDC three Media District General Business Zone and is surrounded by a variety of other commercial, retail, and restaurant uses. The restaurant includes a fifteen hundred square foot interior area with thirty-seven seats and an adjacent patio area with an additional twenty-four seats. It should be noted the patio is located entirely within the parcel and does not encroach into the public right of way. Hours of operation, ten AM to twelve midnight daily. No dancing, entertainment, or after-hours use is proposed. This will remain a full-service restaurant. Beer and wine will be ancillary to the main use of food service. The applicants are highly experienced and successful restaurateurs involved with such, uh, operations as Sushi Roku, Katana, Boa, Robotta, among others. Um, this is not their first attempt at a full-service restaurant, they have over twenty years of operating restaurants in the area that have been successful and remain in great compliance with both the ABC and the cities of their location. I wanted to thank the Planning Department, this has been a long, uh, hard work process and our planner's been wonderful throughout, uh, helping us throughout, uh, the, the process and addressing any concerns. Uh, we do have one question, uh, about condition, proposed condition number twenty, which states that all servers are to be twenty-one years and older. Uh, my one question on that, uh, board members, is that the Department of ABC allows a server to be eighteen years or older if it's involved with food service. Food service along with alcohol service, you are allowed to be eighteen. I'd hate to restrict what the restaurant can do as far as an operation and offering jobs to teenage, uh, teenage kids who, who really have a hard time finding employment right now. So if we would be able to modify that to allow eighteen years and older, we would truly appreciate it. Uh, I am available for any questions you have about the operation or the application.
Uh, thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter, each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five, the phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as it may take a couple of minutes for the first caller to get through the line. Mr. Clerk, well, we'll see if there's any callers, but why don't we just wait two minutes instead of the three minutes?
Planning Board Chair, we waited two minutes and we still have no callers.
Thank you. There being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department, well, it's shorter to say, Mr. Avakin, would you like to make any further comments?
I have no further comments at this time.
Thank you, does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? Maximum time of ten minutes.
Uh, no further comments unless the board has any particular question from me.
We will get to that, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Does the board have any questions of staff or the applicant?
I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Hadian?
The business hours, um, are, um, can you clarify the, it's a question for staff, wh- what's the business hours? For the proposed, uh, business?
The restaurant will be open, uh, from ten AM to midnight, but, uh, that is their business plan, but the condition of approval for the administrative use permit which approved the restaurant several months ago allows for an earlier opening time of six AM to two, uh, to midnight. However, uh, the alcohol sales would be limited to ten AM to s- to midnight. And the last call would be half an hour before that.
So, um, the proposed was, the, the proposed hours was ten AM to midnight, then it was changed to six AM, do they serve breakfast?
No, the, uh, the six AM hours is, is just to provide flexibility for future change in operations for the, for the restaurant itself. That approval predates the, uh, submittal of this application for a CUP, that's for the restaurant use to be allowed to go in that space, uh, and that was approved in January of this year.
And then, um, alcohol serving will be from ten AM to, um, eleven thirty midnight, uh, evening?
That is correct, that is, uh, the condition.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Chair Rosati?
I have two questions, um, one for staff regarding c- condition number twenty. We impose the, the rule for twenty years or older for servers. Is there a reason why we, we deviated from the ABC?
I think that's been the standard condition of twenty-one, but, uh, I think the applicant made note that the restaurants are allowed to, uh, have an eighteen-year-old employee serve alcohol. Uh, we've, we've just been very conservative in that approach, just ensuring that, you know, uh, maybe between that age of eighteen to twenty-one that someone could show a little more foresight in issuance, but it's clearly within the purview of the board if you want to change it.
And then, w- we'll talk about this as a board, but I, I think the applicant makes a good point, especially in today's world, there are a lot of kids in that age, especially actors and things like that, that need that job. So, we, we can discuss it as a board as a whole, uh, when we come time for deliberations. And then my second question is for the applicant, it looks like the, excuse me, it looks like the patio is on the corner of Maple and Riverside, is that correct?
It is correct, sir.
And is that patio enclosed, does it have a pony wall, well, what do you got there?
It's exactly, it is enclosed so that, uh, you cannot exit the patio onto the street or enter the patio from the street. It's about, I believe it's about a three-foot, or to a three-and-a-half-foot metal railing that'll be covered with greenery.
With what?
Uh, greenery, shrubbery, some kind of landscaping.
Okay, all right, that was just, I was just curious if people could come and go, so that, to answer my question, thank you.
Great question, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. I now declare the hearing closed and the planning board will now deliberate, what is the planning board's pleasure? Vice Chair Rosati?
Uh, first I want to commend staff. Uh, I drive with, by this site three to five times a day and it's been vacant for, since two thousand and forever. And I'm glad you were able to find something to make it work there. I, I believe this is a sushi restaurant and I think, I think that whole area, the vibe in that area has changed so much, there's a lot of walkability. There's French food, there's Italian food, there's, um, uh, ramen, there's sandwiches, there's Mexican, and now there's a, there's a sushi restaurant, so I, I think that it works really, really well for the neighborhood. And I'm glad that, uh, we found someone that's gonna take, you know, I think that building was tired, you know, it was circa nineteen forties probably, a- and they're gonna revitalize it into something that is great for our community and probably now more than ever, we can use the tax dollars, so I think it's a win-win. Um, I'm a yes, um, thank you.
Who would like to go next?
I'll go next, I can also support the project, uh, the, uh, application for, um, alcoholic beverage license, they're basically using the existing space. And, um, I also have a question for staff, wasn't there, um, um, an ordinance that allows for, um, spaces of less than twenty-five hundred square foot converting to a restaurant to, um, use, um, as is parkings?
I can definitely answer that question and that's, uh-
Other than that, I can support the application.
Thank you for the question. The administrative use permit which was approved, uh, earlier this year, that's what, that's what it addressed, actually. It, it approved the restaurant to go into that space, uh, with, with limited parking. It, we're using the ratio of three-point-three per one thousand square feet, uh, which is allowed in our code. Uh, the offsites, the offsite spaces which were built into that permit which are required would be only for the employees and the onsite spaces would be for the customers, so essentially the restaurant would have eleven spaces effectively. Although the required number of spaces is five.
Thank you.
Ms. Lou?
Yes, I would, um, also support the staff's findings on this, um, I'm in agreement with my colleagues and I would also support the applicant's, um, request to lower the age of the servers to, uh, eighteen.
Thank you, Ms. Lou. Mr. Gamboa?
I'd like to, um, reiterate everyone else's comments and agree with the applicant's request as well, I think it's a great location for this use, especially with the studios there, and, uh, I think they'll, they'll do great.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ramirez, may I ask for clarification? The age limit to twenty-one versus eighteen?
Yeah, we've always had it at twenty-one, but, uh, the applicant is showing and, you know, we'll confirm with ABC that if ABC allows, uh, for people within a restaurant, uh, setting to be eighteen years of age and serve alcohol and it's within, it's within the purview of the board if you want to reduce it from twenty-one to eighteen.
All right, thank you.
Chair, if I may interrupt?
Chair and fellow board members?
Yes.
How you doing? I just want to clarify, so the ABC regulations, I remember they allow minors eighteen, well, eight, people eighteen to twenty-one to serve alcohol in a bona fide eating establishment is so long as they're only serving alcohol in areas of that restaurant primarily designed for the service of food, so in other words, the carve-out is to say that if they have a bar space that's only there selling alcohol that they can't, they have to be twenty-one years old, so I just want to throw that out there. So if we're gonna make an amendment, if we could just clarify that we either say in accordance with state law or we specifically detail that these are people that would have to be serving alcohol in areas designated for food consumption.
That's very helpful, thank you. Based on the information that we have in front of us and I would agree with my colleagues, I'm able to support the application, uh, with a yes. And as far as the request to eighteen, I think we would be well, well advised to, uh, uh, take the advice of Mr. McMillan and, uh, amend the resolution accordingly. So, uh, Mr. Clerk? Oh, yes, Ms. Hadian?
Sorry, question, so we're separating, um, the, uh, resolution for the application and the proposed restaurant and, um, another item for the age reduction?
No, the age reduction would be part of the, uh, the conditions, uh, for approval for, for the beer and wine license from the city.
Is it possible to separate that from the rest of the conditions, because honestly, I cannot support that.
Okay.
I can support everything but not the age reduction to eighteen.
Take two votes. Take a vote on the resolution and a vote on the, the age eighteen or not.
Well, we could do that, yeah, why not? We'll take two votes and the first vote, Mr. Clerk, uh, you heard that, right? We'll take two votes, the first vote will be on the resolution, Mr. Ramirez.
Chair, I might have missed it, was there a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Oh, sorry, we didn't make a motion, all right, let's make a motion. Who's gonna make the motion? Ms. Hadian, why don't you make the motion?
I'll make a motion, but let me know where, um, I have to amend for the two conditions. A resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving project number twenty dash zero 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 five four six for a conditional use permit allowing for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval being the, the, uh, application, can, can you help me with the conditions?
So, so it would be everything in the conditions of approval, um, with a separate action being considered for condition of approval twenty?
Correct.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, Mr. Clerk, may we take a first vote on the resolution?
Yes, uh, Planning Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Lou?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
And Chair Tegunian?
Yes. And now may we take a vote on-
May we take a vote on the amendment?
Let me, let me make a motion on that.
All right.
So the motion is on amendment twenty to change it so that employees that, uh, service employees, not bartenders, that serve food can be age eighteen or above.
And that would be, just a correction, it would be, uh, amending condition of approval twenty, okay.
City Attorney?
Yes.
So we have a first?
May we just tweak that a bit, uh, in accordance with state requirements?
Yes, I think the simple way to change it, if we just add in the sentence, "in accordance with state law," so, so, um, let me go back. Pull up the condition.
Is that a friendly amendment?
All restaurant employees serving alcohol- All restaurant employees serving alcohol must be 18 years or older in areas primarily designated for consumption of food in accordance with state law.
I believe that is a very good amendment, if we can adopt that.
And I'll accept that friendly amendment.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
All right. Mr. Clerk, may we take a vote on it?
Yes, Planning Board Member Hadian?
Yes, on the resolution, no on the amended, um, condition 20. How do we vote on that? I think we had to do the vote once for the resolution and once for the amended, uh, condition 20.
Yes.
Yes.
We're just doing the condition 20 right now. So it would be a no on condition 20. Would that be correct?
No, on condition 20.
Thank you.
Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Lou?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
And Chair of the Union?
Yes.
So the motion passes with a vote of four to one.
Thank you. As to the amendment?
As to the amendment, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we move on to item number three. Thank you all for joining us and helping us out here.
Thank you, board members.
Now is the time, thank you. Now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 20-0006906 concerning an application for CUP to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Pablito's Tacos, at 3803 West Burbank Boulevard. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
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 Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
No. No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Uh, if they were, they're included in your agenda packet.
Thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair of the Union and members of the board. My name is Marcio Medina, and I am an associate planner with the Planning Division. Tonight, I will be presenting the proposed conditional use permit request for the property located at 3803 West Burbank Boulevard. The applicant, Patrick Panzarello, on the behalf of Pablito's Tacos, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption through a type 41 alcoholic beverage control license at an existing full-service restaurant. The project is located in a C3 commercial general business zone and is located on the northwest corner of North Screenland Drive in West Burbank Boulevard. The property is 11,110 square feet, and the tenant space is 2,130 square feet. The property is occupied by one other tenant and also has vehicular access from the abutting alley at the rear of the project site. The sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption requires a CUP in the C3 zone. The tenant space does not have any previous planning permits or Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control licenses allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages. The granting of this proposed CUP will allow the applicant to apply for a type 41 license with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption at this business location. The sale of beer and wine for offsite consumption will not be allowed under this permit. Under the requested CUP, the applicant will install a beer dispenser at the counter to serve alcohol. There will be no major structural alterations made to the building on the interior or to the exterior as part of this permit request, and there will be no alterations made to the daily operations of the business as part of this permit. There are currently 11 parking spaces onsite that are accessible to patrons visiting Pablito's Tacos. These parking stalls can be accessed from Burbank Boulevard via a one-way driveway that exits onto the existing alley. As previously noted, the sale of alcohol for onsite consumption would be an incidental use to the existing restaurant operations, and therefore does not require any additional parking spaces to be provided. When evaluating the census tract where Pablito's Tacos is located in, the majority of the establishments that have a license to sell alcohol for onsite sales and consumption are located at a distance ranging from 482 feet to 2,996 feet, validating the applicant's requests to sell alcohol for onsite consumption. Staff finds that the proposed request for the sale of beer and wine at the restaurant is consistent with the character of the commercial corridor along Burbank Boulevard. There are similar uses throughout the immediate area, and this restaurant is consistent with the existing neighborhood-scale commercial uses nearby. Staff has determined that the incidental nature of the proposed use will not cause a negative impact and is compatible with the uses allowed in that zone and in the surrounding area. If this CUP is approved, the sale of beer and wine would be incidental to the operation of a sit-down restaurant where at least 65% of the gross sales revenue must be from food sales. Further, the conditions of approval require that the sale of alcohol is strictly for onsite sale and consumption, and that there will be no live entertainment or dancing at the establishment, and that the sale of alcohol will not occur outside of the hours of when food is being sold. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving project number 20-0003326 for a conditional use permit allowing for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Board member, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just realized, it just dawned on me when I was looking at the map, that I own a property a block away, it's an apartment building, so I seek this, uh, city attorney's advice if I need to recuse myself from that. Um, I don't think it has any impact, but I'm more than willing to recuse myself.
Vice Chair, where's the property located?
Uh, it, it's one block away on the corner of Screenland and Edison.
I think it would be appropriate to recuse, recuse yourself.
Okay.
Um, I, I will admit that, um, I don't have the FBCC regulations right in front of me, but if I remember correctly, I think this puts you into, um...
A questionable gray area.
Exactly.
So I will recuse myself from this portion of the meeting, and then...
We'll call you back.
Call me back.
Sure, thank you. And Chair, if I can just, just clarify, um, and I apologize, um, you read it correctly in the, in the agenda, but we incorrectly noted the project number on this one as well. Um, you, you read the project number is 20-06806, and it was noted correctly in the staff report and noticed correctly that the project number is 20-0003326. So I, for the record, I just want to make sure, uh, that that's noted. So it was noticed properly, it was, um, agendized and included in the packet with the correct project number, but the agenda number was incorrect, and that's why you noted it as such.
So just a typographical error on the...
Uh, correct, this is our second one of the night, so, uh, two too many, but we'll correct that.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Medina, does that complete the presentation?
Yes, Chair, that's, that completes the presentation.
Thank you. I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation. Mr. Panzarello, we can't hear you, perhaps you need to, the audio. All right, go ahead.
How is that? Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Patrick Panzarello, I'm a restaurant consultant, and I help restaurants get licenses and permits and such. And I'm here this evening for, uh, Danny Rodriguez and his Pablito's Tacos on Burbank Boulevard. I had the pleasure of meeting Danny several years ago when I did a, uh, Pablito's for him in Mid-Wilshire on Normandy and Wilshire Boulevard in a food court there, too. I've consulted with Danny on many projects, including one he has downtown that has a full alcohol license, a 47 license. Uh, he's been at this property now for five years, the restaurant's been there for decades, um, and he's applying for a 41 ABC license. He's already done so, and he's already done, done the neighborhood modifications and postings, and the ABC has it pending the CUB or the Conditional Use Beverage License we're applying for today. Um, we, we've been here for five years now. We don't operate late hours. We, we close Sunday through Thursday at 9:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday we close at 10:00 PM. The restaurant is slightly over 2,100 square feet. Uh, we, we feature 44 seats inside, and we feature about eight seats on, on the front entrance off of the sidewalk. Um, there's no live entertainment, no dancing, of course. Um, we have a, a experienced restaurant operator here, and, uh, we're hoping that we can get your support, uh, in his application. The, uh, planning department has about 31 conditions, uh, if, if it is approved. I'd like to talk about two conditions. Uh, condition number 19, it happens to be the same condition that was discussed before regarding the, the salesperson being 21 years of old age. I called ABC last week, I deal with them for 30 years now, and I confirmed that a, a server has to be 18 years old or, or, or older. Uh, um, 21 is usually reserved for full alcohol establishments that have limited food, like a 48 bar or a 42 bar or a nightclub. But restaurants, uh, uh, even with full alcohol, are allowed to have waitresses sell at 18 years old or older. Even markets allow cashiers to be 18 years of old, too, to sell alcohol at the counters, too. Um, I'd like to have that amended also, if possible, uh, to 18 years of age. We, we hire a lot of college kids and a lot of, uh, and also actors, and I hate to limit that, uh, uh, work, uh, uh, force for us, you know, in the future. And also, I like to talk about condition number 28. It states that, uh, the property shall comply with accessibility requirements, um, 100%, and this is an old property, and there's no construction. And, and that should read, if there's any construction or new construction, we should comply with code requirements. But right now, for us to remodel and do handicap bathrooms and, and, and stuff like that, too, it just drastically changed the entire facility. It would make, it would make it financially feasible to have a beer and wine license if that's the case. So if, if possible, I'd like to discuss with that also with you folks. Uh, other than that, um, I want to thank Marcio, Mr. Medina of the staff. Uh, he, uh, walked us through this process for the past few months, and, uh, was always available to us, and, uh, gave us, uh, answers to our questions quite, quite easily. I, I told him last week that I'd be discussing the conditions with you folks, uh, this evening. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Panzarello. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open, please bear with us, as it may take a couple of minutes for the first caller to get through. So why don't we wait two minutes and see if we get any callers?
number, so, um, they're trying to fix it right now, but it might be more than two minutes, so just want to let you know. Uh, bear with us, uh, people that are listening into the meeting, um, we're having some technical difficulties and want to just confirm that, um, people will get an opportunity, if, uh, there are any, uh, people attempting to call in, that they have access to the board in making public comments. So, uh, bear with us, they're trying to fix it. I think we just hit the two-minute mark that we anticipated, so as soon as it becomes available, we'll let everybody know. Thank you. Uh, Chair of the Union, um, I guess at this point, instead of having the, um, silence of nonactivity, um, may the board want to consider maybe a recess of about, uh, 10 minutes or less? They're just trying to figure out the technology, so I, I don't want to just sit here, um, if, if the board desires. I mean, if you want to sit for five to 10 minutes, so be it.
The question is what happens after the 10 minutes?
Um, well, we'll come back and see where we're at. If, if we have audio, then we have audio. If not, um, they're working to fix it now.
Fred, are we able to do other parts of the agenda? Um, like, can we, can we do questions? Can we do that, and then come back to public comment?
Um, can they jump around?
Yes, they can. If that's, if that's the board's choice, um, you know, I, I think that should be, uh, done through motion, uh, but if, you know, it's the majority of the board's decision, then, um, we could move the agenda around to account for this technical error.
All right, I'm making a motion to proceed, uh, and we will get to the, uh, comment section at the end of the other sections, uh, if, uh...
Chair?
Yes.
Uh, let me go get Vice Chair, since we're coming out of the item.
We're not coming out, we're gonna continue with the item.
No, no, we're just moving to the questions section.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, we're just gonna move, move along with the same item.
And I would second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, may we take a vote on that, or that we're gonna be moving on and continue? And we'll get back to the, um, phone or public comment section at the end.
Yes, um, Planning Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Lou?
Yes.
And Chair of the Union?
So at this time, we're gonna skip over the public comment section, and, uh, we'll go to the item with the, with the representative of the Community Development Department. Mr. Medina, would you like to make any further comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to, um, clarify some things that the applicant had pointed out. Um, one of them was, um, the, uh, the, the practice of allowing a, or restricting the age of serving alcohol to 21, as previously noted in the previous project. That's been a standard condition that we've, uh, put in there for these kinds of, of permits. And just like the previous permit, it's, it's up to the board whether or not they would like to reduce that number. Um, the second thing I would like to address is, uh, item number 28 in the resolution. The second thing I would like to address is item number twenty-eight in the resolution, Exhibit A seven, which the applicant brought up about the ADA compliance. I reached out to Building and Safety, and they notified me that for this particular permit, ADA compliance would not be required unless there would be some kind of structural work that would be done to the building. And then at that point, Building and Safety would then evaluate that work and then determine whether or not ADA compliance would be required or updates would be required. So that condition was just put in there just to ensure that if in the case that there was work done to the building, that ADA compliance would be met.
All right. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You may have a maximum time of ten minutes for...
Yeah, very, very shortly. When I received the conditions last week, I called Angie Rivera of the State Department of ABC, Van Nuys Office, jurisdiction over the Burbank area. And she confirmed with me too that eighteen is the age required for serving beer and wine if it's a food facility. And I also called Marcelo and let him know that also. And as far as the ADA requirement, Building and Safety would add a tax to any new construction of twenty percent. If someone's doing a remodel of, say, two thousand dollars, they could tax twenty percent or have do four hundred dollars for the handicap upgrade. If the remodel is over a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, then the applicant has to one hundred percent comply. In this case, there is no new construction, so there's no ADA compliance here, but it's called grandfathered in for those codes. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does the board have any questions of staff or the applicant? Ms. Hadian?
I have a concern and recommendation for the condition of minimum age requirement working at establishment serving alcohol. I would like to have more information, written information from ABC and from State of California before we even allow the applicants to request reducing the age from twenty-one to eighteen. Those laws are put in place for a reason. And eighteen to twenty-one is a very critical age. So I really appreciate to keep the minimum age on the conditions, twenty-one years old, until we have further information and we have better understanding. Otherwise, I have to keep rejecting and not accepting the resolution with a condition like that that reduces the age to eighteen. And I really don't want to be or look like being a difficult person. So the best thing, I think, we better have more information provided to us in writing.
Well, perhaps Mr. McMillan would be able to assist us. Mr. McMillan, earlier you mentioned that the state law allows individuals to be serving alcohol when it's ancillary to the food, so long as they're not allowed in the bar area if one exists. What if this establishment converts it? I'm remiss. I should have asked this question earlier. If the other establishment or any establishment, they receive the permit, but then they carve out an area and now they convert it into a bar of some sort. How would that work when we say, okay, we approve an eighteen-year-old to serve?
Thank you, Chair and fellow board members. The law that I know, which is the California Business Professions Code section that allows for servers to be eighteen as opposed to twenty-one, that limitation only applies to a bona fide eating food establishment in areas that are primarily designed for food consumption. So it's the law itself limits the eighteen-year change to areas where food consumption occurs only. So if there are any areas designed primarily for alcohol consumption, they are required to be twenty-one years old. So is that, not to continue to harp on it, but the reason why I added the language I did in the prior resolution, I wanted to include the words "in accordance with state law", because that's kind of a catch-all hook to say they have to comply with state law.
Thank you. Ms. Hadian, would that be satisfactory? Or are you, I mean, are you looking for the actual statute or the code or the Business Profession Code that Mr. McMillan referred to?
Yes, definitely. Instead of the actual statute of limitation and the code from ABC and from the State of California and to see where they do, they are compatible and where is the loophole that we are allowing eighteen to twenty-one work in a place that alcoholic beverages serve. I have been invited to places that seventeen, eighteen, all the way to before they become legal for drinking have been present. And they do want to drink. So let's limit that. And if this actually limits the number of jobs available in Burbank for people like eighteen to twenty-one, I don't think it's a large impact because of the limited number of licenses that we have. So let's keep things as clean as before. And if eighteen, if twenty-one is the minimum age, let's keep it at twenty-one until we have more information. And I do appreciate that. I believe this is concern of many parents that probably are not aware of this change that we're making. And they're not present. And they just looked at the yellow card as a liquor license without knowing further and knowing what a larger impact these kind of licenses with the modified condition will have on the community.
Okay. Who wants to go next? Ms. Lou, any comments?
I don't think we're on comments here. We're just doing questions, right?
Questions, yes.
So we're not in discussion mode. So I don't have, well, actually, one, just one thing in regards to the presentation from Mr. Medina. The, where the beer was being served, it was, it's part, there's no part of that counter is considered a bar, right? You couldn't go up to that area and just go, I just want a beer. I was just looking at that one picture you had of where the beer was.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question. Yeah, that area is, it's a dispenser area. So like a draft, if you wanted to get a draft beer, one of the servers would go there and then serve the alcohol from that draft system and then serve it to one of the patrons.
Right. But it's not like a bar area?
No. It's not a bar area, no. It's just an area where a waiter or waitress can go there and serve the alcohol from the draft system and then take it to a table.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gamboa, any questions?
No, no questions.
All right. I have a question. In fact, I need to address the question to Mr. McMillan. Now, if there's an area designated just so that they can dispense beer, how is that treated? Would that be treated as an area where alcohol? I mean, would that, based, I guess I'm trying to say, is that consistent with the state requirements? That that's not a, an area that's considered for alcohol serving? I'm not sure. How does that work?
If they could provide food and alcohol at that location, then to me, if you're a bona fide eating, so you're a restaurant, you don't have a separate bar area with actual bart, really what the state code provision is looking to get rid of is not allowing bartenders to be under the age of twenty-one. So if you don't have an exclusive space where you could only consume, sell and, you know, sell and consume alcohol, then to me, you move into the arena of allowing eighteen years and older employees to serve alcohol as an ancillary service to providing food.
So basically, if there are no stools in front of that particular counter where someone can sit and say, "Serve me a beer", then the state law does not require the actual server who's taking the food and the drink to the table to be the twenty-one-year-old?
Yes.
Would that be, okay. All right. And I have a question of Mr. Panzarello. You mentioned that there's not going to be any construction. Is there any type of remodeling or any type of improvements that will be done inside the premises?
No, sir, none at all. One thing he did recently was that he changed the doorway, the entrance, to make it more ADA compliant. That was the only thing he did recently as far as construction. With COVID, he's putting more tents or tables outside because he can't serve inside now. So right now, he's serving the tacos and burritos and such outside. And I drove by there today. It was very colorful and very good taste, too. So, but there's no, there's no construction. And the counter you everyone's talking about is our service counter. It's where people order, people pay, people pick up there. They pick up all the beverages there, whether it's, you know, soda or whatever it might be. And the beer is coming from a dispenser. It's a tap system. It's coming out of a refrigerator. And it's just being dispensed there in glasses and such. That's how the beer is being sold.
I'm sorry for interrupting there. Will you be serving alcohol in bottles, beer in bottles?
No, but wine, wine might be sold in bottles.
I understand, but you will not sell beer in bottles?
No, as far as I talked to him, he has a tap machine that is connected to a keg. And the keg is sitting in the refrigerator and is pumped to the tap itself. So I don't, I'm not proposing any bottles or cans of beer or wine. Just the tap. And then the wine would be in bottles most likely.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ramirez, you signaled perhaps that we have a phone number, a new number?
We do. So I'm going to read it out loud, and I believe they're also going to put it on the screen. So the phone number that people can call if they're interested to provide public comment, and I'll read it twice, is eight one eight two three eight five eight two zero. Once again, it's eight one eight two three eight five eight two zero. So if you would like, you can start making calls and they'll put you into the queue. And it should be showing up, it is showing up on the screen as eight one eight two three eight five eight two zero.
All right, we'll wait the requisite two minutes. Yes, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Chair. If I could just, I had some time to look up the actual state law provision. I wanted to mention it to Board Member Hadian, if she doesn't mind. It's Board in Professions Code, Section two five six six three. And the particular subsection is letter C. I can read that section right now if you wish or if you want to...
Well, is it a lengthy section or is it a...
It's about seven lines.
Let's go ahead and hear it.
Okay. Any person between eighteen and twenty years of age employed in a bona fide public eating place, as defined in sections blah, 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 it's earlier that defines what a restaurant is, which is licensed for the on-sale of alcoholic beverages, may serve alcoholic beverages to consumers only under the following circumstances. Such service occurs in an area primarily designed and used for the sale and service of food for consumption on the premises. And the primary duties of the employee shall be the service of meals to guests, with the service of alcoholic beverages being incidental to such duties. For purposes of the subdivision, "serve" or "service" includes the delivery, presentation, opening, or pouring of an alcoholic beverage.
All right, thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. And it says ages between eighteen to twenty-one, which is the legal age, the minimum age to work and the legal age to drink. It specifies at the beginning of the paragraph?
Yes. It says, "Any person between eighteen and twenty-one years of age."
Thank you.
While we're waiting, since we have, since Mr. McMillan introduced some new information, I just wanted to give Ms. Hadian an opportunity to comment on it if she wanted to or actually... Go ahead, Ms. Hadian.
No, I don't have any comments. If that's the law, then I think for the previous application, they also had it as a part of the law. But we didn't have enough information and we thought that it's being modified. So I objected the modification of the law. But right now that we actually read through the law, it is covered, so...
All right. So you're satisfied? Does that satisfy your concern?
Everyone, everyone should be satisfied with the law, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hadian.
And Chair, just for the record, we've gone over the two minutes and we have no callers.
All right, since it was a new phone number, I think we were a bit more relaxed. That's fine. I now declare the hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure?
I can support the findings and the application. I don't see anything that's not compatible with the review of the application, so I can support the project.
With the amendment as the requested eighteen years of age servers and non-ADA compliance, which I believe was clarified, it's not that it's not ADA compliant, it's that no ADA compliance will be necessary so long as no new construction is done.
I don't think we need amendment to the age because the law actually allows eighteen to twenty-one working at the establishment as specified.
I just, I believe the resolution specifies twenty-one years of age. So we would need to make that amendment if we, if we're in agreement with the applicant's request.
If I, for the sake, and I apologize, I know this is a planning board discussion. I just want to bring your attention, the condition twenty-eight that's being asked to be amended is one that was provided and included by the Building Division, Building and Safety. And I guess I only put this out there for the sake of the board considering it. And that is, the Americans with Disability Act is a federal requirement. And I have some reservation or just some concern if we seek to modify it. If it applies, then it applies. If it doesn't, under the requirements of the code, then it wouldn't apply. So leaving the language in here doesn't, does nothing to either apply it or not. But making changes to this, I have a concern that if we start kind of carving out potential alternatives, it's all, the concern is that maybe we may be going crossways with any requirement. It's almost like, is the board's action going to trump any federal requirement or any building code requirement that would apply to the project? I think it's the opposite, right? The, what you're considering is the use. The actual, the trigger is going to be whether the, any, any construction activity occurs. If that construction activity doesn't occur, then it's not going to trigger ADA. So I just have some reservations of altering the condition because the way it's written now, it would only apply if it, if it hits the triggers under the building code.
So I'm not quite sure, why would the, why would the applicant find it objectionable that they will raise the question regarding the ADA compliance? So can we, can we, can we, can you please read the language?
Sure.
Item twenty-eight?
Yeah, it says, "The property shall comply with accessibility requirements in the California Building Code and the Americans with Disability Act."
Correct. I mean, so it's neutral, shall comply. If there, if there are conditions of this project that trigger that compliance, so it's moving forward. We're not talking about moving, would that be correct assessment?
That's the way I understand it. Like, I'm not the building official, but that's my understanding of the way it was written.
Okay, so it's moving forward. If there are any conditions that trigger ADA requirements, then, and under the circumstances, I believe Mr. Medina indicated that the project would not require any ADA compliance since there's no construction going on. So all right, we're satisfied with that. I guess the only amendment would be to the, to item nineteen. Would that be correct?
That's my opinion. And maybe just for clarification, if the city attorney wants to read the same language we put into the prior condition, just for the record.
Actually, actually, the language, since the city attorney went through the trouble of looking it up, I think it should just say, "Consistent with Business and Profession Code, Section two five six six three, et cetera."
Chair, I agree with that. I think specifically mentioning that state code section is the clearest and simplest way to ensure that, you know, we're complying with the state law and giving the applicant kind of the full... and giving the applicant kind of the full, I guess, ability to operate while still complying with.
And, and the section, and the section you looked at is the 2020 code?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it would be consistent with Business and Profession Code Section 25663 et cec as published in 2020. Because there may be amendments in the future and we don't want to be caught up with that. All right, so we, so this is, I lost track. Are we at the deliberation sec? Yes, we're deliberating. Ms. Lu, any, any comments?
Just that I, I support the findings of the staff report. I do, I know, I know Fred, that you were trying to say that we don't need to further clarify 28. But I just wanted to ensure that California Building Code is where that trigger comes in. So like, no, the, if you don't make any further changes, structural changes, then it wouldn't trigger the ADA to come in.
I believe that's the general understanding and practice of the Building Department. I mean, the language that they.
I just want to make sure so that we don't have to say like, if applicable anywhere within like section.
I'm sure Mr. Panzarella will play this video back to everybody if they, if they make such a request.
It was our intent, the board's intent and understanding. Yeah.
And Board Member Lu, Board Member Lu, the condition 26 actually references the, the current edition, the 2019 edition of the Building Code.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Question for you, Fred. Gracie asked a good question. What actually triggers complying with ADA? Adding to the square footage, adding to the occupant load, or what modification?
I am going to, for the record, say, this is beyond my expertise. The triggers would be those that the building official per the Building Code and ADA would apply. So whether it's a dollar threshold, whether it's the scope of work, whatever it is that's in the Building Code that triggers it, that would be what's applicable to it. I believe the applicant mentioned certain dollar thresholds. But I'm not going to say that I, I know the specific answer. I would, I would defer to the building official. This is his condition. And if it's triggered, I don't think there's a way to get around, you know, federal requirements and building code unless someone goes through an appeals process. So I would, my suggestion is to leave the code as is. And at that point, when they go through the process of review, the building official will clarify that.
So the application for License 41 doesn't automatically trigger complying with ADA in restaurants or in a building? We just want to clarify that so they don't have to go through something that they don't necessarily are required to do.
Correct. I mean, the trigger, the trigger for work is a building permit. So an ABC license isn't going to trigger a building permit.
Thank you.
I think you got plenty of evidence, Mr. Panzarella. Don't worry about it. Mr. Gamboa, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Ramirez for that background because that was going to be my issue with modifying 28 because, you know, the building permit would trigger that process. So I think that's, hopefully we're okay with that because I think we should leave that there. And amending it, I'm fine with that as per our last case. I think this is a good project. I haven't been to Publetos yet, but I drive by a lot and it'll be nice to, you know, go there and have a beer at some point. But it seems like a great addition to the neighborhood from five years ago. So I think it's just one of those things that will help. Whatever we do to help out the businesses, just kind of do things you expect to go when you go to a place to eat nowadays is helpful. And they seem to be good neighbors and good, good partners. So I'm excited for that. So thank you.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I think it's consistent with the request. I mean, the request is consistent with the, the code. And the amendment that we're going to be adding, I think will further clarify and provide some relief or some flexibility to the business owner. And I think we beat the notion that ADA changes would be required at this point. And as far as the project stands right now, it does not. And the building official will further clarify that as it comes forth. So I'm able to support the project also with the amendment. Anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. But again, help me where the amendment goes. A resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving project number 20-0003326 for a conditional use permit allowing for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. The address is 3803 West Burbank Boulevard. Publetos Paco is tackles the applicant as amended. For conditions number 28.
19. Condition number 19, we would add the lang, yes. Condition number 19, we'd add the language, "Consistent with Business and Profession Code Section 25663 et cec as published in 2020." So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Clerk, may we take a vote?
Yes. Planning Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Lu?
Yes.
And Chair of the Union?
Yes.
The motion passes with a 4-0 vote. And just for the record, Vice Chair Rosati did recuse himself from the, from the hearing.
All right, will someone be kind enough to notify Vice Chair Rosati that he can come back in? Now is the time for the, we're going to be moving on to the next item. Now is the time for the Planning Board members to nominate and vote me out as the board chair. In fact, it would be voting in a new board chair and vice chair for a term of one year, starting from today, I guess. So, Mr. Ramirez, you seem eager that you want to say something. Go ahead.
Just, whether you get voted in or not, that's a purview of the board. But as we've done every year, just for the, for the people watching in the audiences, every year we consider reorganization of the planning board. And at that time, the board has an opportunity to consider nominations for the chairperson as well as a nomination for the vice chair. So this is the time and place during the agenda when the planning board can consider motions. And if you would like to entertain Chair and board members, maybe the first motion is to consider any, any motions from board members for someone to be nominated to the position of chair.
All right. Any nominations for, like to, well, maybe I can start. Perhaps I can nominate Vice Chair Rosati to be chair for the next year. Of course, Mr. Gamboa, Ms. Lu, and Ms. Hadian.
So for the record, there is one nomination by current chairperson at the canyon to nominate Vice Chair Rosati for the chairperson position. Are there any other nominations for chair?
I recommend Gracie as chair.
So this is, there's a nomination by Board Member Hadian for Board Member Lu for the chairperson position.
And can I also make nomination for the vice chair?
It's, let us, let us take it, yeah. Let's take it in bite-sized portions and let's go through this effort first. Thank you if you so consider. So let's do it. I'm trying to remember how the council does it. But let's, we have one motion for the chairperson to be Mr. Rosati. So why don't we do a vote for that? So we'll go through and basically do a vote. And so on Zoom, we would go down the line by board member on that proposal to nominate Chairperson Rosati. So if the clerk can basically do a roll call of each board member and if the board member could, will take a vote for who they want to be the chair. So for the first one, we'll go down, we'll go with the first one being Chairperson Rosati. So if we can start with the board members and just basically go through each one. And if they say yes or no, and then we'll, and then we'll see where that number gets. And then if need be, we go to the second chairperson.
And we'll start with Mr. Gamboa and then Ms. Lu, Ms. Hadian.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So we'll begin with Mr. Planning Board Member Gamboa. And this is a vote for Mr. Rosati, or Planning Board Vice Chair Rosati to be the new chair of the planning board.
To be clear, we only vote once, right? It's not like you vote.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Does anyone have to accept the nomination or you just, we just nominate people and we vote on them?
Yeah, I think we just nominate and then just go from there. Who's, who's it going to be? Is it going to be for Rosati or is it going to be for Lu, for chairperson?
It sounds like Mr. Gamboa, do you want to nominate another person?
No, I just want to make sure I, I vote for someone who wants to do it. That's all.
Sorry, Gracie.
That, that, well, does Ms. Lu want to do it?
Oh, I'd be happy to serve.
Okay. All right.
Well, let me do this. Let me make this easy because I've been chair three times. And I think it's important that we get some experience because some of us might be coming off this board. And if we do come off this board, we need, we need people that have experience of being in that seat. So I will bow out and let Ms. Lu be the chair.
All right, Mr. Vice Chair Rosati just made life easy on everyone. So.
That's awkward.
Mr. Clerk, may we take a vote? For, for the chair for Ms. Lu?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for the clarification. And Planning Board, Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Rosati. I think that was, that was the avenue I was getting at too, but appreciate that, that commitment. Yes.
Planning Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Lu?
Yes.
And Chair of the Union?
Yes.
So Planning Board Member Lu is now the new chair of the planning board with a vote of 5-0. Congratulations.
And we won't shift the chairs because she's at home. So we'll, we'll take that, you know, when you guys move from your position. So you can remain there, Board Member at the canyon, while we do the vote for the vice chair.
Oh, I see. All right. All right. Yeah.
It was a bit of a joke, but.
Actually, that's actually a good question. So will they have the, will the chair have the option of coming in if she wants? Or can she stay home if she wants?
She has the option of staying home or being here. Sure. Okay.
Mr. Rosati, Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Board Member Gamboa for vice chair.
All right, there's a nomination. I like to nominate Ms. Hadian to be vice chair.
That's a good choice, too.
Sorry, Mr. Gamboa.
No, it's, it's okay. And I would actually like to respectfully decline just simply because of my, I have some personal circumstances that might divide some of my time a little bit. And I want to be able to, if I was the vice chair, to be able to give it my, you know, full extra attention.
We have an extremely congenial board and I think maybe we should stay together for the next 100 years. All right. So thank you, Mr. Gamboa. You made our life easy. Mr. Clerk, may we, well, Ms. Hadian? Are you fine with the nomination? You'll be able to serve?
Yes, I just have a question. It is one year from today until next year.
Okay, give or take a week. Yes.
If we survive Corona and earthquake, everything else.
Yeah, give or take a week or two. So yes, depending on when the next hearing, you know, is, is next year. Mr. Clerk, may we take the vote? What, do we have a motion? We have the motion? We have a second?
You have a nomination, yeah.
We have a nomination? We have a second? I sec, I made the nomination. Any second?
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. So let me go down the roll call. Planning Board Member Hot, or Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Lu?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
And Chair of the Union?
Yes.
So with a vote of 5-0, Planning Board Member Hadian is the new, is the new vice chair of the planning board. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for taking on the obligation. Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during the period may address the board on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, please call 818-238-5820. Please note, this is a new phone number. That's 818-238-5820. We'll wait the requisite two minutes.
Planning Board Member at the Union, so it is more than two minutes and we have no callers.
There being no calls, I now declare the public comment period closed. We'll go to the next item. Now is the time for reports from city staff. Any reports, Mr. Ramirez?
No new reports.
Thank you. Now is the time for approval of the minutes from the August 24, 2020 Planning Board meeting. Is there any questions, comments, perhaps a motion?
Moved. So moved.
Second?
Second.
May we take a vote, Mr. Clerk?
Yes. Planning Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Gamboa?
Yes.
Planning Board Member Lu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
And Chair Abiraham at the Union.
Yes. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning Board members may introduce many item, new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Do members of the planning board have any items to introduce? No items. Now is the time for city planner comments. Any comments, Mr. Ramirez?
No. Thank you guys for bearing through this meeting. We had a couple of hiccups, but I think everything turned out well. So, and congratulations to the new chair and vice chair.
Before we adjourn, I want to thank everyone for nominating Mr. Vice Chair Rosati and myself to serve the past year. I really enjoyed it. And hopefully in the future, obviously, we're going to be working together for some time to come. And congratulations and best of luck to the new chair and new vice chair. We now adjourn to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, September 21, 2020. That's next week at 6:00 PM. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comments in the following two ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city webpage or by calling indirectly to the planning board meeting. And I'll give you both phone numbers. I'm not sure next week's number, if it's, we're going to be reverting back to the original number.
Yeah, we'll be reverting.
All right, so then, please call eight one eight two three eight three 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 five, if the number is different, we will make the appropriate announcement. Thank you all for participating and have a good evening. This is the hardest planning board there is, we're working week in and week out. Good night.